We're back, so college meeting order. Uh, we'll start with the net for the uh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If you need somebody to sing the nation. Oh, there you go. Okay, since everybody has been here before in the room, um, we'll dispense of all the other stuff that we don't really talk about and go right to the approval of the minutes. Oh, we have Doug online. Doug, you still there, bud?
I'm still there. Can you hear me?
Doug, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I think he's unmuted, but we can't hear him.
Uh-oh.
Okay, well, Doug is online. We'll make sure that he gets unmuted if we need anything. Okay, uh, approval of the minutes.
Can you hear me?
Any changes? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by Aaron. Aaron, any other comments? I'll face him if I'm saying aye. Aye. Okay. No legal notice is published. First item of business, BP zero six zero two days twenty-two, the uh, barman estate. Do we have somebody online for that one? Nope, now turn around.
Okay, this is a final flat approval for a two lot subdivision. Planning board previously approved this back earlier this year. All of the conditions of preliminary approval have been shown on the final flat. Believe it or not, I have no condition to final flat approval, other than signing and filing your final flat.
Well, that may be a first. We may just have to go by lottery to get into this. Okay, uh, Dan, do you want to say anything on it?
I do, I. I call it rocks out.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Tim.
I'm good.
Lance.
I'm good as well.
Okay, board, Tim.
I'm good.
Adrian.
I'm good.
Aaron.
I know.
Doug.
I'm good.
I can see him moving clips.
Okay, I can now see him, but I can't hear him, Doug.
Let me try calling in. I'll try calling in.
Man, here you go, Doug. I'm working on that.
Alright.
Alright, so, that being said, we have a um, a resolution with no conditions.
Well, that's the first time ever.
Ever.
I don't think I've heard of it.
Ever. So, do I have a motion to wait reading and approve the resolution?
So.
Poop by Adrian, second by Aaron. Aaron, any other comment? Quick take a roll call, both please.
Yeah, for some reason we can't hear you.
There we see Robin now. Robin, can you hear us? Robin's muted. I can see the little red. There we go. Robin, can you hear us now?
Actually, it's not that alright.
Alright, Dan, Dan the tech guy's working on this, so.
Doug is going to call in.
Okay. Quick take a roll call, both please.
Tim Dulusha?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Adrian Bell?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I haven't seen him yet. So, next item up is uh, another site plan, our site plan, BP zero six oh three days twenty-two, final site plan approval for phase two, Brian? Thank you. No.
Must have tipped in the half of it. I thought there was three.
No, we got rid of the second one. You're now. Uh, we got rid of one, put it down.
Your honor, can you talk to us now? Try to get a hold of Robin?
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on, everybody. Where's the follow?
I guess it's called, I guess, hidden icon show X out of the speaker.
Yeah, I tried that and we're good. We can call Doug on that thing.
The bat phone? You gonna be here then?
I'll just try calling him, dude.
Is he calling in now?
Calling Robin.
Uh, I'm on now. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we still have sound in our end, so I don't know.
Did this work, guys?
They go, I gotta do nine or two, one of those fancy systems.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We're ahead. Let's just keep going while they try to go with a thumbs up. Yeah, there you go.
Copy.
Go ahead.
Alright, good evening, everybody. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates. I'm here in behalf of Hathaway Corner LLC. Um, we're seeking final site plan approval for phase two B, the apartment section of Hathaway's Corners. Um, as a.
We give you ahead, Doug. Doug, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, no.
Alright, we can hear you. Alright.
Perfect. So, and sorry.
It's alright. Wasn't on here, Randy. It was on, it's on our, it's on our tech expertise on this thing.
Um, so I got a older iPad right now, so.
Okay, alright. Alright, we're listening to Ryan right now. We're talking about the final site plan for the Hathaway Corner, okay? No problem.
Alright, so as a recap, Hathaway's Corner has received incentive zoning approval from the town board, the government area overall, site plan approval from planning board in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, those approvals allowed for eighty apartment units uh, within phase two B, and that's shown on the uh, color rendering to my right. Um, the final site plans that were submitted um, are based off of this rendering. Phase two B is located on approximately eight point two, three acres. Um, that includes eighty apartment units and eleven um, two-story apartment buildings, eight apartments in each building. Um, and therefore it's consistent with the um, incentive zoning resolution approved, preliminary approval. Um, phase two B will be served by two uh, private drive connections to Savala Boulevard, and just so everybody orients themselves, three thirty-two is down here.
Yep.
And north is to the right. And then, uh, this is currently where their um, where their office, like the storage trailers are currently at this point. And then, so, the two connections to Savala Boulevard, and then one connection to future Cameron's Way. Cameron's Way is plus or minus anticipated to be installed um, late July, August timeframe. Um, the project does include an internal uh, pedestrian concrete sidewalk network. It'll have connections to the existing town public sidewalk network. Um, additional amenities on site include plus or minus a hundred and sixty parking spaces, uh, thirty garage spaces and um, six garage structures. The structures are located one, two, three, four, five, and six. Um, and each garage structure has its own trash receptacle in inside of it. If you look at the architectural rendering provided, or the elevation provided for the garage buildings, they have six bays, six big garage doors, five of them are for cars, and then the sixth one, I think it's on the far left side, um, is for the trash receptacle that has a man door inside, so you can have access without lifting the rear door. Um, also included are the associated Nancy and lighting improvements that are consistent with the um, incentive zoning resolution and the approved preliminary plans. Utilities for this project um, include public sanitary and public storm sewer connections uh, to the existing um, public um, mains off of Savala Boulevard. The water main is proposed to be private for this project uh, with a master meter and backflow devices and an above ground enclosure. Um, and approximately this location um, where the water main um, is extended from the public water system off of Savala Boulevard um, as the each apartment building requires a system, and then the master meter backflow will um, cover all of the buildings. Eleven individual backflow devices. Um, with regards to stormwater management, all stormwater ponds serving the site, actually it's just the one pond. It's in the northeastern corner of the property and already corner forty-one, three thirty-two. My head stormwater management town provides the water font requirements for this project. Um, there are, um, there is a dry swell and um, bio retention area that will be proposed to um, with this bay provide additional runoff production and water quality treatment for this, this project. Um, so, no new stormwater ponds are required. We're just providing a couple um, water quality features
Right.
um, on this project. Um, finally, to recap, um, as I mentioned, um, this project is in substantial performance with the overall group preliminary plans. Um, and uh, we have received a copy of the draft resolution. They did offer um, some input from our end based on conditions of approval. Uh, we also received a letter from the town engineer, it may twenty-seven. We responded uh, to their comments with a written letter and through our coordination, uh, we didn't see any issues in addressing uh, the MRP comments and we feel comfortable working with the town um, in addressing all of the conditions of approval on the draft resolution.
Cool, okay. Starting with Ron.
Okay, well, just to follow up on what Brian said this afternoon about fortified. Finally, caught up with Robin, you know, Dan and myself, to talk about water supply, hydrants, and other things over there. And uh, previously, we had a condition, we have a condition of approval that all the water lines have to be public water in this project.
Right.
That that element was submitted. We want to withdraw that and replace it with a condition that uh, BME provides a copy of a draft operation and maintenance agreement to maintain public uh, fire hydrants.
Yeah.
In the area with private water lines. Um, the I, the water and sewage system is very uh, system on being able to have public hydrants in there because we found that private hydrants really don't get named in
Right.
the way they should. Um, Monroe County Water Authority has several O and M agreements with municipalities which Brian is going to provide copies of. So, that condition that was in there previously from uh, water and sewer for public waters and I'd give the number.
Public hydrants.
Of the maintenance.
Yep.
I'll come to do. Dan's looking for it.
Yeah.
It's going to be pulled and replaced with a condition that prior to signing of the final site plans, that a operating
Number four.
Condition number four?
Yeah.
Okay, condition number four is going to be uh, peeled, pulled, replaced with a condition that prior to signing of the final site plan drawings, there will be an operation and maintenance screener in place accepted by the town board and filed with the town clerk's office that um, allows for private water supply lines and public fire hydrants be uh, installed as part of this final site.
Right. So, still be private hydrants who just have.
No, they will be public hydrants.
Those be public hydrants, right? The, the maintenance will be you, will be operating.
Yeah, I, I believe they would be private technically. The water lines are private, but the O and M agreement will allow the town to operate them, maintain them.
To operate, maintain.
And test them.
Okay.
At a frequency that, that they desire.
Yeah. And, and, and we talked this afternoon, Jeff Brad, the town attorney. Jeff and Dan was in the room when it happened. Uh, heard him say that, you know, find an example where another municipality is allowing this, and then I will consider it. And so, Brian has that on several locations in Monroe County, so I think it'd be good to go with that change.
Okay.
Just to clarify that though, those are still private. I'm honest.
But those are maintained and operated by the town.
Through, through the agreement.
What's that mean by maintained? So, if they go out there and test it and fails, we fix it? Or then they get flagged and they have to.
They get flagged and they have to fix it.
Because it's still private equipment.
I don't, I guess.
We just have the.
We have the right to.
Yeah.
It should, they should never get maintained. So, now this allows us to test them, continue to make sure they're in proper servicing condition. But if not, they get flagged and they have to maintain. They have to send someone, they have to filter whatever needs to be done here.
Right.
Ryan correct me if I'm wrong, but that would all be in the agreement. Yeah, that's what lawyers are for.
I'm trying to guess what they're going to come up with. Okay, that was mine, okay. Any else, Ron? Dan?
Uh, no, I, I believe that the draft resolution covers all staff comments. And Ryan, you did have the two concerns. That just one, and your other one? The other one, it wasn't really a concern. I, it was a comment saying that no transfer receptacles were identified on the site, and that explains. So, it could be fuller, I believe that we were showing, so. Okay, so you're okay with the one change, and if you honestly the other one, then. That's fine. That's fine. So, yeah, no, I, I think we're in a good spot.
Okay, Tim?
Um, I don't really have any comments. I know I had some concern that the Carmen's Way, not having to turn around, but we determine we can, we'll be able to turn around their entrance there, going into it, so. I'm good with it.
Right, so all private roads, right?
Well, that Carmen's Way. Yeah.
Inside, insiders are better.
Yeah, inside is private, but Carmen's Way, we've got to put it.
Because it's Carmen's Way.
Right, now we ought to turn around with a small pile of dead.
Right.
Yeah, related to that, Tim, is over in the Villas.
You know, the side of Carmen's Way.
The side of Carmen's Way, at the point in time that they reach the thirtieth uh, building front, they have to have their second access point to Carmen's Way.
So, they have to have any Carmen's Way.
That will serve as the turnaround when they hit to that point. In the meantime, they'll be using the entrance way to Carmen's.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, Lance?
No, I think uh, most of our comments were just, so there was a couple of differences between this plan and the original plan in terms of stormwater. Nothing major. Um, I guess, one question, Ryan, as it relates to Carmen's Way, and I can't recall, and I apologize. Does the plans that were submitted show the approved Carmen's Way, you know, how we, the Villas came in and got an approval with one version, then it got modified thereafter. Does Carmen's, I believe these places should at least reflect whatever the latest greatest version was, if it does. I don't recall if they were going, I apologize.
It, it does. This is, this is the Carmen's Way. It, it shows the Carmen's Way that it was approved with the Villas and had the new profile that we adjusted. The storm and sanitary profiles are all from Carmen's Way, probably for them.
Alright. Okay, Ron?
Just, just a point of clarification. Carmen's Way will be extended to the property line, right?
That was uh, this is where it was led, or I'm sorry, this is where the agreement was made to end at that point, and I think the town supervisor was talking about extending that separately from the Villas brother.
Okay. Alright, so that's where we are now, so let's go to the board. Aaron?
Um, so, uh, those bump out curves at uh, proposed drive B and C. My, if, if, all those parking spots I'm driving to B are full, or there's a couple cars in there, is there enough room for our biggest fire truck to get through there, to, to, to make that turn into drive C? The road doing up? Yes, right there.
Yeah, and I, I believe we had, um, in the preliminary phase, I believe we had provided um, turning movements for that. Um, this, this um, layout is exactly the same that was approved for um, the preliminary, and so, um, they were looked at, we provided at the end of it, as you'll know, um, is a um, international fire code approved.
Right.
Which has sixty-foot legs, and then same up here, and then um, the northern portion allows the complete um, drive through to Carmen's Way.
Okay. Yeah, that was my concern, that, that, that turning right there. Now, talk about the hydrants. So, are we putting in more hydrants? Because all I saw was that one.
Two.
The shoe. So, I see that that had one at apartment building four hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Rose the other one.
I'll have to check my plans that, actually. Just to be sure.
Yeah, I remember, Dan's in there too.
Down by the stairs, uh, garage.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
And then what about uh, I missed this one too. Uh, so the, the western, one hundred, two hundred. There a hydrant over there?
Hey, don't believe so. In, interior, there's one right on Savala Boulevard, I believe near there. There is one near there on Savala, and I'm not seeing it right now. We'll just expand our plans to show the location of it though.
So, right. It's an existing one right now?
Yes. Yeah, because all the water you know is about, has been installed at this point.
As far as previous, previous sections.
Okay, so I'm assuming it's west of that intersection, with that, both that Carmen's Way?
It's, so, Savala.
Savala. Yeah, so on Savala, are we, are we looking more west? Than your, your project?
That's Savala?
Savala, one is west. I think it's just to the west, and then there also is one um, read in the Villa section um, on the other side of Carmen's Way as well. So, we can just expand our report just to show them where.
Okay.
Things.
Um, where is your H VAC?
Yeah, and it's, I got a lot of landscape right there. You got, and there's ads.
Mm-hmm.
Or there's areas where it could all, you can see on. Yeah, they'll, they'll be on the um, the exterior of the buildings. Uh, they're not certainly shown on the site plan, but they'll be uh, on the exterior of the building. They're not going to get a roof, so it'll be on the exterior of the buildings.
And then, uh, just a note at uh, the topsoil stockpile. Um, I saw we had that, you know, it's listed, so I just want to make sure that we adhere to that. For topsoil. Where we'll put topsoil.
Yeah, we have the topsoil stockpile shown on the construction.
Yes, yeah. Please pay attention to your data. That has been a hot button recently on a couple of the projects, okay?
That's all I have.
Adrian?
Uh, they can, Eric.
Tim?
Yeah?
No, I'm good with the changes we talked about.
Okay, so, so you're okay with resolution? Oh, Doug, what do you got? Doug, anything for us, Doug?
Well, the only thing I have, um, is a phase that looked at putting any EV charging stations out there. There's already three days right now. Recent ones, I guess, for commercial properties where multi people could be using it, you know, just looking forward, it's coming, I think, at this point, so, you know, whether it's a garage or, you know, what, arcing area, it's uh, something that they want to explore to uh, to, to get it installed now, because they got, again, some of the signs right now, they, they almost do it for free, mostly, so. Um, this is about my comment. I had everything else that I think is in your asking, but the, I'm assuming that this, this wider discussion, you'll have a master meter on, on the gate.
Master meter, yeah, with a O and M contract or an O and M agreement for the hy- hydrants.
Hydrants, yeah, yeah.
Ryan's got that.
I'll pass that along. Yeah, to this point, I'm not aware, or nothing is on plan for the project, so.
Yeah, they're giving away. You might want to look at it, but.
Yeah, the job is good for free right now, right?
Yep.
Nothing's free. Nothing's free, Doug.
I recommend you buy a boat.
Okay.
I recommend Ryan talk to somebody, Kim Boyd, who might have some.
Okay.
On EV.
Okay, um, okay, so we have a resolution, and Ron and Dan and John are going to rewrite item four. Yeah, item four, which is going to then include the operations and maintenance plan to take care of the hydrants. Other than that, you're okay with the resolution?
Yep, we'll provide a draft.
And, okay, and staff will run the changes for by you before it goes final, correct?
Yeah. This is prior to signing the final.
Right, we're going to put in that, we're going to take care of the whole thing, approved by the town board and the town attorney, well, town attorney and the town board, prior to signing the final site plan. Okay, with that, with that change, do I have a motion to wait reading and approve this resolution? Poop by Adrian, second by.
Tim.
Aaron, any other comments? Quick take a roll call, both please.
Tim Dulusha?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Adrian Bell?
Aye.
And Haven Church?
Aye.
Doug Bees?
Aye.
Doug, okay, we got it. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item up is, there's no other board actions. There's open discussion, Ron.
Okay, a couple of things are going on, but uh, planning board update on.
Okay.
If you recall, the concern of the county's stance for some time about stormwater ponds in section A S of Auburn Meadows.
Yep.
Uh, Dan and I went out today, took pictures. Sent a memo out to Walt Baker at BSP Engineers, as well as our engineer of record for the Auburn Trail Project, and will be strengthened. Fisher, so just asking them to uh, come up with a compromise. The solution that Walter has designed for the stormwater pond places that too close to the trail. Town supervisor wants at least a ten-foot level shoulder on that side of the pond, uh, trail. So, uh, we met today out there in the field with the Asian Conan, the project manager for Cityo Construction, who's digging the pond and dealing with it. And uh, they're going to uh, agree to moving the trail and putting some protection barriers along the pond of the, uh, in the foremost, uh, split rail fencing to uh, protect uh, youngsters from going off the trail and into the water, if you will. So, um, that memo went out just before it's done its meeting, and uh, we'll wait to hear what Walter has to say tomorrow, here soon. Um, other than that, we're very close with the applications for another incentive zoning project. Who was the Powers incentive zoning.
Right.
And uh, hopefully we'll be able to get that moving along in number three.
How many, how many units there?
Two, I think, it's two hundred and eighteen, isn't it? Two hundred and eight, two hundred and eighteen? I thought it was that, yeah.
Huh?
Is this Powers land?
Yes, it's, it's a Powers land, but it's tonight east of.
Not behind you.
It's not behind us. There's a Powers piece that's not being included. There's a Powers piece, it's not being included. It's the next one to the, to the east.
And then the, the east of that, which was originally going to be a solar.
Right.
So um, that continues to move along. We did receive, I just received today the traffic generation report from S R S of Associates for the Farmington Market Center project, which I'll get out tomorrow.
Okay.
That came in late this afternoon.
So you're only got one left to get, right?
Only got one left to get. And that's G and A, and I'm hoping that I get a response from Jim Steppa, Steppalopoulos.
Yeah.
Uh, on that. And then when we get that, we'll have a howl with the state D O T and others and, uh, hopefully move this rezoning application back to a public hearing and action.
Okay.
Uh, the town board did, uh, recall the previous resolution on the secret classification or the project. I'm changing it from type two to type one because of the potential disturbance of land. And I won't, we'll improve it in that.
Good idea.
Yeah. So, um, we still haven't heard of Pat Grant. We're waiting to hear their, on that as others are. Some suspect it might have something to do with the date of the upcoming primary election.
No.
No, no, no.
Sounds like it can't be true.
And, uh, God forbid. The other thing is that I learned today that the, uh, medical building going in over there at Auburn Junction.
Yeah.
Uh, is, uh, U R M C, uh, Thompson. It is not replacing the urgent care facility.
Right.
It's additional medical offices.
Family practices.
Uh?
Family practices or something?
Yeah. And, and.
How much of the building are they doing secure?
Uh, I think it's almost eighty percent.
I'm gonna say, yeah. Yeah.
So that's the latest there. Um, and then the only other thing is that, uh, we still have to work out some details with the E S P engineer on landscaping and sidewalks and things over there. So, yeah.
Tim? All right, Dan? Um, your next meeting?
We would have the Fire Broke subdivision.
Yep.
Uh, coming back to you guys. Your preliminary review will have ended by then. And we can discuss the seeker and continue the public hearing.
Right.
Uh, and then also, as chairman knows, Myers has been requested to come to that meeting. Uh, hopefully to tell us the project is fully completed. I did do an inspection out there today. I sent the inspection notes back to the applicant and to the chairperson. And let him make the decision. Do you wanna speak about that?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to brief these guys already, and I didn't brief Doug, but, uh, there were some outstanding issues on the inspection today. Items were supposed to have been completed by the first of the month. And it's now the end of the month or the end of May. It was supposed to be completed by the first of May. Now then the end of May, still have thirteen, eighteen items, whatever, left open. Um, so I requested that they come to our next meeting with all the items completed. And if they weren't, then I would probably recommend that the planning board consider, um, sending a note to the town board requesting that they execute or use the funds in the letter of credit for this project to complete any outstanding items, uh, on the project. I don't know any other way to get their attention. That was the only way I could think of and, uh, we'll kind of push ahead. But already I saw a note come back that four or five of the items were already taken care of. So looks like they're moving forward. We'll see what happens. It's a complex issue with a lot of little pieces still outstanding.
And a lot of the issues, and I think you can comment on this, well, I sent the pictures and my notes ahead. A lot of them are just little things all over the sun. Just a little thing up here, a little thing up there, and it just would be completely.
Mow a little grass. Clean a little area, yeah.
So, but overall, the site is pretty close. It's just.
Right.
So that's, that's where we're at with Myers. Um, I had a new staff member start today, her name's Carol. Uh, she is another administrative assistant, so she'll be working out in the front with Sarah. So if you call the office, you might get her on the phone. And we are having P R C tomorrow, which is the first Thursday. Um, we've been very honored for, for a very long time to have John O'Callaghan do our minutes. Uh, but Sarah is going to take over now, now that we're doing them on Thursday. So that should be an interesting change, but John said that he will always provide technical support to Sarah if she needs it. We encourage a lot of people to call in and make comments. So, uh, but I've set off the agenda and uh, it's a pretty full agenda, but a lot of projects going on. Most of them are just updates of what's going on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna plan to, and it's just pretty, pretty much updates, nothing to do there needs my input, I don't believe. And Ryan.
That's all I got.
Don't have to get to me afterwards.
Right.
All right, Tim from Highway?
Um, pretty much the same thing, continuing to work on town line. Hopefully we'll be paving next week and we'll have the top on town line. Continue mowing. Pretty much that about it with the highway, we've been helping other towns and um, the parks, um, had a little bit of vandalism around. Uh, up in Thunder Park, especially this used to be odd spot up there.
Hmm.
But before we could ever see it, but now we got cameras up there, so we can see it now.
There you go.
We'll have it some point. Um, and Beaver Creek Park, we're gonna pull some of the fence down around the playground, so we'll be able to play on that new playground up there.
Nice. Good school. All right, Lance?
I don't really have much to offer, I think we covered a lot. The site design development criteria has been updated against all the staff members have. So we owe the town a P D outfit, so the new one should be placed on the website sooner than rather later.
Um.
For, for the purpose of the board, there wasn't many changes. A lot of it was standardizing some lights, which will come across in the scene on some of the plans. Was updating our sidewalk P field to match that of the state D O T, which again, we will see on lots of the plans. Um, and some of it was just procedural stuff internally. Um, there are some minor changes there, so. As a whole, those, those are good updates at the time, so get that to the town, get it on the website so we don't develop.
Did I catch in one of the comments on the safe place that the location or the depth of the forest main had been found?
Good call. So yes, so we were out there with the town, we located it and basically the location that we were able to find was the forest main kind of goes a bend and that's right where the crossing is. We located to that spot. It's, it, a real, I want, I don't want, I don't, I don't recall. I think it's over six feet deep in that spot. So, um, we provided that information back to Don Lewis, engineer of record for a safe place. Uh, we informed him that we believe that he can either pursue moving forward with the plan as proposed. We wouldn't want to detail all that crossing to present back to the board as part of the final review. But I suggested to him that he might want to consider doing two pipes instead of one to give us even more traction because that could be a comment that we're gonna have either way. So either A, move forward with that, but then he's got some calculations he's gonna have to do that demonstrates how that would fit, how that would work, or pursue a single pipe and then see where we end up.
Okay.
But I give them both options. Either way, we'll have a detail as part of that final plan decision.
Cool. When do we expect to see them again?
Well, they anticipated submitting in June, we were putting back in front of you in July.
Okay, all right. The clinical plans have been received by the town, right?
Yes, and they are in my office this summer.
And I signed them today.
Yep.
So what are they, they'll be in signature right now. Okay. All right, anything else?
I'm good.
Any from the public? Okay. All right, with that, um, so the board knows I continue to work with the staff on any issues that might come up. Certainly if it wants to come up and what we can do with them and, uh, pretty much that, so. Again, another relatively busy few weeks, but it is what it is, so. Anything else?
I don't know.
And?
Oh, Daniel's still employed there?
Yeah.
Nope. Tim?
Um, calendars, the end of June, there's, uh, twenty ninth, I'll be out of town. Is that gonna be an issue to you, Pat? I could call that.
It's not on the.
The five or three.
No. Fifteen, isn't it?
Okay. Take the first, so the next one's fifteen.
Fifteen to the twenty ninth.
Yeah, fifteen and the twenty ninth after that, correct?
No, only two of them. First and third.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's because it was the first, which is today, so then the fifteenth, that's it for June.
Okay, I'm gonna address myself.
And we move it into June.
And I was worried, but I didn't want you to.
Did I, did I hear me here in July? Doug, how about you? July, okay for you unless you travel?
I'm good. Everybody now, um, yeah, I'm good in July.
Okay, Aaron?
I'm good.
Good, okay. All right. Anything else by anybody? Okay, motion to adjourn by Doug, sectioned by Tim, all in favor? All right.
Hi.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
We're good to go. Hey, good evening.